Call the regular Montague City Council meeting to order. If we could do roll call, please.
Jerry Wonders?
Here.
Lisa Keel?
Present.
Susan Newhop?
Yes.
Robert Hires?
Here.
Laura McGuire?
Here.
Paul Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Omen?
Here. Invite the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with all His greatness and all His great justice and all. We have been given an agenda. Is there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda as we have it?
So, second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as we have, say aye.
Aye.
Folks, we have an agenda. Number five on the agenda is public comment about any agenda items. We have several agenda items under general business and approval consent items. Is there anybody who would like to speak to any of those items? If so, let me know. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Please give your name and address and use the microphone.
You said name and address?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Sally Whitbeck. I live at 8124 Old Channel Trail. For background, I live on the lake. I have a degree in biology and I used to work for the Smithsonian Environmental Research Center on Chesapeake Bay. Years ago, I attended Jeff Ochs' presentation about the necessity of the mute swan culling program. At that time, no evidence was presented that mute swans were actually causing damage to the ecology of White Lake or displacing other species. There was also no data or scientific evidence that any other programs had resulted in improvement of lake ecology or the return of populations of displaced species. The DNR were asking to kill animals based only on a theory. What are the various parts of this theory? One, mute swans damage the lake because they eat aquatic vegetation, damaging the native plants. Yes, they eat vegetation, but to my knowledge, they don't discriminate between invasive plants and native plants. Our lake is choked with invasive plants. So if the swans are pulling up invasives as well as natives, isn't that argument awash? Also, the trumpeter swan requires more food since it's larger and its longer neck allows it to pull up vegetation in even more areas. Quote, "The main role of trumpeter swans in the ecosystem is their consumption of aquatic plants," unquote. So how can we use this argument against the mute swan but not the trumpeter? Number two, mute swans are aggressive. A better description would be to say that they are defensive, as are most species, including trumpeters. Quote, "Trumpeters can be extremely violent towards competitors," unquote. So again, how can we use the aggressive argument against mutes but not trumpeters? Number three, mute swans have no effective natural predators. This is just not true. Raccoons, bobcats, coyotes, fox, snapping turtles, mink, herons, eagles can all prey on swans or their signets. Number four, mute swans are non-native, so they must be removed. Non-native and invasive are not synonyms. If I don't keep up with those fragmities in our yard, they will choke out the cattails. The fragmities are clearly invasive. Mute swans, however, did not displace trumpeter swans. Trumpeters were decimated by hunting. Successful introductions of trumpeters can only take place in habitats that are suitable for trumpeters. Trumpeters require, quote, "undisturbed lakes, pristine wetlands." They prefer unpolluted water and, quote, "little or no human disturbance." This description might apply to the wetlands at the mouth of the White River, but it definitely does not describe White Lake. White Lake is a recreational lake with a lot of human activity. I hope when the council debates this issue, they will ask if the DNR has done their homework. Has there been any analysis before or after the culling program to determine the effect on the native bird populations or the aquatic plants? Have there been successful programs in other places? In order to justify the killing of animals, there should be scientific studies conducted to determine the program's effectiveness and benefit to the lake ecology.
Thank you. Moving on to number six, approval consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items. And it's all of them, including?
No, I think if you just, yeah, I probably should just...
Okay, for the council minutes and the communications with the dispatch, the West Plan Policy Committee, fire district ambulance, Muskegon County Recovery Center, and the regular bills in the amount of 386, 35973 with a 21986741 passed through.
Support.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Omen?
Yes. Number seven, eight, Jeff?
Seven eight, Resolution 2023-03. This has been on the agenda for a little while. I think we are already up to next zero eight. So we've talked about this at the council meeting, back at the work session, then before the council again this evening. The only updates that I have this evening is there was some discussion, I think during the work session, related to control program on Skeggen Lake, because that would impact control program on White Lake. And the city of North Muskegon has passed a resolution to alter the program, and then they're working on the other municipality around Muskegon Lake. So that is the only update I have for you. The full resolution is within your packet. I did put on the screen here this evening, the final therefore for the resolution. And then also included in your packet were the original letters from surrounding organizations, a scientific research and then list, and then the article from USDA mute swans. We'll also point out that Councilwoman Newhop did also bring four letters that were on the back table, and then I distributed to you via email as well. That is all I have right now.
I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the mute swan project upgrade under DNR.
Any discussion or questions?
I'd like to bring it for a discussion. I've said this for the last several months. There is absolutely no study that shows that this program is warranted. There's nothing planned to inventory or to do an environmental impact study of this lake to determine what the status of this lake is now in order to determine what they think the mute swan is or isn't doing on this lake. After 10 years of killing swans on this lake year after year after year, there's no study as to what the result was. Nothing, no data, no plan to create any data, nothing but a request for five more years to kill swans. And I will tell you, these four letters, I hope that you got them on the back table. I did not contact these people who sent these letters. They contacted me. They heard about the program here. They heard that this was up. They have been fighting this issue of killing mute swans for years with the same arguments. There is no data, there's no proof. There is this campaign that has been waged against the mute swan with little evidence that what they say is accurate. I would especially draw your attention to the letter from the Regal Swan Foundation that was written by Sheila Boland. Sheila's been studying swans for decades. She is a worldwide swan expert. I think her testimony bears looking at and believing. It is very clear to me that she certainly knows more about the mute swan in this country than the Department of Natural Resources, which has done no study. The person who wrote, also, if you look at, just look at her credentials, the awards that she's won, she's not a lightweight. She's been recognized for her work. If you look at the letter from the Michigan Loon Preservation Association, written by Arlene Westhoven, one of the things that Arlene told me was that the Loon Preservation Association, which has been around since 86, is really unhappy about the fact that organizations have co-opted the loon and held it up there as a reason to kill mute swans. And she wanted to make it very clear in this letter that that is not the case at all. It's not the case here in this lake, and they don't see it in other places. So that argument should go flat. It's simply not true. And again, this is an organization dedicated to preserving loons, to increasing their populations. And the other thing she said that was very significant was that this is also not a lake that we want loons on. Loons, when their nests are disturbed, leave them. And if they have the opportunity to have a nesting pair of loons, they don't want them nesting on a lake like White Lake because they nest and leave it, and they lose a year opportunity for that pair to raise young. So for them, it's a huge loss. So they would not even work to try to put loons on this lake or to encourage loons to this lake. In defense of animals, I thought was remarkable, they came to me and said, "What can we do to help? We would love to do an internet meeting with you. We would like to help you as you move forward," looking for other answers to problems that people who live on the lake may have talked about, specific situations, ways to help with education. I thought it really interesting, by the way, if you were watching TV over the last week and they were talking about problems along the coast of California and Florida with shark bites, and I thought, okay, here goes, now we're going to start a campaign to kill sharks. And the campaign is more education, people. Here's how we need to identify sharks coming in, conditions under which they come in. Here's how we need to provide education to swimmers and to surfers, how to protect themselves. Here's what we need to do about medical care. The shark is an integral part of the ocean, and so let's learn to live with it. The woman from the Westland Field Township Supervisor also, she said that the public outcry when they approved the plan was significant, and they realized they hadn't done their homework. So they went back and did their homework and realized there was no reason to approve killing the mute swan. No data, no study, no proof. If you want a real education, go online and look at websites from other countries where mute swans are. And you know, they're all over the world. So look at the Netherlands, look at Germany, look at England, look in places in Asia. You will find that the mute swan, the very same species of swan that we have here, is revered for its tranquility, its gentleness, its good parenting, its fidelity. They write storybooks about it. They write musicals about it. They love their mute swans. They nurture them, they protect them. The British do a swan upping every year where they go onto the Thames River and they log all the young signets and check them for health and protect them. They love them. I think if we, if we look at those societies, those countries, it's impossible for me to figure out how is this than the same bird here about which hunting and fishing publications and organizations speak so terribly? It's the same bird. And I'm so dismayed that this, this bird has taken such a hit, literally and figuratively, in this country. In my opinion, it's hugely unnecessary. And at the very least, I would like to stop this resolution today. If we can't stop it, I'd like to table it indefinitely until we have proof without a doubt that there is a problem caused by mute swans on this lake and that we should go forward with the kill. But we don't have that, and there's no plan to get it. I think it's also, one last thing. I know that there's a concern, if we don't kill all these birds, we'll just be overrun with these birds. They are not overrun with these birds in other countries, not at all. Swans have so many predators on this lake. Snapping turtles, Sally talked about snapping turtles, mink, foxes, dogs, dogs, wild dogs, not dogs, dogs as pets, and dogs that are hunting dogs. In one of the letters, you'll see the eagle, eagles will eat the signets, they will also take the old swans. So in addition to that, swans are used to living in temperate areas. We have darn cold winters here, and they struggle mildly. We lose them in winter. Polar vortexes, which are having more and more now, are not kind to swans. So they have plenty of ways to keep their populations in check here without them being shot. Thank you.
We have a motion in the floor in support. There's no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGuire?
No.
Councilman, Councilman Hires? Councilwoman Newhop?
No.
Councilman Schultz?
No.
Mayor Omen?
Yes.
Motion doesn't pass?
Motion failed.
I make a motion that we table the resolution.
It didn't pass.
What didn't pass?
The resolution didn't pass. There's no resolution to pass.
So there's nothing, we don't need to do anything? Okay.
Okay. You okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. Oh, ready.
No problem.
Sorry.
Number seven, B, Jeff?
Cemetery building repair. I noted in my city manager report there, there was some, some desire for further discussion regarding the repairs to that facility. So that's the one on the screen here. City had received a quote for $9,800 to do some repairs to that building to save the structure itself. Because there's some concern about what to do with that building and the expenses associated, it would be a recommendation, send it to the facility subcommittee. That committee was formed with the original subcommittees a couple of years ago. That committee consists of Bob, Lisa, and Tom. So that committee would look at the quote, look at the building, look at further discussion, see what possibilities are. I did talk with Cemetery Sexton Steve Lowman. He came back from recent training, and he's got some other ideas and possibilities to use the facility. But that would be a way, don't have to make a decision on the quote this evening. Can simply move it to subcommittee if that is the desire of the council. It needed to remain as a general business item because during the work session, it was pushed to this meeting for action. So that action can be to then send it to subcommittee if you desire it.
Can you speak to this, Jeff? I know you talked about it a little bit last time, whether you think this is a good estimate?
I do.
And whether you're comfortable with it?
Yep, I do think it's a good estimate. I think there is still some paint on there that needs to come off to really look at what's the extent of the repairs. I did talk with Dean, and he understands that and put that and included that as part of his quote.
It is in your?
Yes.
Is this going to cover redoing a hole outside of the building?
Everything except for the rough.
Okay. And nothing on the inside?
Correct.
Okay. I would urge everybody on the council to take some time to go up there and meet with Steve and go through the building and take a look at it. I know that if at some point we try to tear the building down, we're going to get backlash for some people in the community. But it just seems to me that we're spending good money, we're throwing it down the drain, and we need to really look closely at this. I want to give other people an opportunity to speak, but I'd like to make a motion to kick it to the subcommittee for study and that we really took a, take a good look at what we're using this building for, if there isn't another way that we can spend money to do what that building does. It, I think you really need to take a look at it.
I second that, Washington.
So is there other discussion? We have a motion and support on the floor.
So either way, if this were to be voted on today or go to subcommittee, was there a plan to get it done before winter? Or it's going to sit another winter anyway? Either way, it goes?
Dean would be able to do it this, this fall winter still. So if it's, if it's tabled to move to subcommittee, he would just re-quote it when the committee's ready.
So goes to subcommittee, when do they meet? I mean, are we talking next spring yet before there's direction?
I would hope so.
Yeah. Just a matter of when we can tell this happens.
But just keep it in mind, the longer we wait, the worse it gets, right? Unless your objective is to demolish it.
Well, I have a problem with saving a building when we have equipment that's sitting outside of the DPW garage when we should be expanding that so that expensive equipment is properly stored. It is not adequate, I've spoken with Steve, and it's not adequate for his storage purposes. Plus, it's a block building, so it's always humid in there except the course of the wintertime. So really, it's not a good place to store anything.
So excuse my ignorance, but the brown pole buildings that are towards the back of the cemetery, are those part of the cities as well?
Yes.
So are those stored also?
Yep.
And those are full also?
Questions? What's in this now?
Storage. So during the winter, some of the equipment gets stored in there. There's some extra boards and matting for, for grave work and trying to put out in there. Some piping, just miscellaneous storage.
And is that what it was designed for?
Not sure.
It was casket storage, I believe, when it was built.
Yes, maybe even thought it might be, well, Steve's back in the corner there. Nope, that's Rick. That's the other, oh, yeah. That might have even been used for office maybe at one time, but it's hard to say. So largely storage, the whole, the whole period.
Honestly, I think that if the community wants to save the building, there should be a fundraiser. I don't know that the city should spend dollars to rescue the building.
But it is a city cemetery. I mean, right?
Right, but you know, still, the building really doesn't serve a purpose.
It's a historical building. I mean, $10,000 to preserve that is three is a lot.
Right. But the $10,000 stock isn't going to take, you gotta see the inside. The inside is, the ceiling's falling, the roof...
It's still, it's a historical building, and we could figure out purposes for it. We could figure out things to do.
But I mean, I would, I would be willing to bet that we're going to double that if we try to make, if that tripled to make other repairs.
Because we just spent $5,000 for fireworks. We can't spend $10,000 for a building, a historical building?
But I, we're going to double or triple that to try to... That's what the subcommittee's going to be for maybe.
I would, I would like to ask if the subcommittee meets in the next month if possible so that if we decide to go forward with it, we could still try to get it done this fall. I mean, as Laura points out, you know, just we'll continue to keep falling apart.
So we have a motion on the floor in support. Is there other discussion? And what's been, the motion is to push it, put it to a subcommittee. Yeah, we have support. Roll call, please.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
No.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop? Mayor Omen?
Yes. So you're going to set up a meeting, Jeff?
No.
And then three last?
I, can I just say something? Can we add a comment or no? I agree with Lisa that this is a historical building, and I'm wondering if there might be any other purpose for it, a little bit more meaningful than storage. And if there is, one of the churches in the community, they might be willing to take this on as a place to do small ceremonies or something like that, you know, and they have small private funerals or anything. It's, I mean, it's a, it's a part of the city's history.
I would like to add that I spent several weeks this spring traveling across the country. And when you drive through small towns, the things that make them cute and charming and interesting is that they preserve little old buildings exactly like that building. If, if you tear down every single building, then it's just a boring little town like every other boring little town.
Again, sorry for my ignorance, but do we have a historical society within the White Lake area?
We do, we do.
Okay, so maybe that's something that we can address with them and see if there's any funds or fundraisers available to help you. Just a question.
I think it's a good idea.
Said no.
My motion had nothing to do with tearing it down either, Lisa.
Okay.
Okay. I did not say, I did not say I was in favor of tearing it down.
So I think the subcommittee, Bob, Lisa, and myself, would welcome all comments. So if you want to give them to Jeff, maybe not all the comments, but questions that we ought to look at.
And ideas for what to do with it.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, seven C.
Seven C, deer management areas for 2023. I'm going to jump forward just real quick and then we'll come back. So over the past several years, the city has certified several parcels for deer hunting within our boundary. So that's this overall map here. So both public and private lands have been certified. Basic criteria is that it has to be six acres or greater. If it's a first-year certification, then all the adjoining landowners have to be notified that this would occur. Then if it's a private land, it doesn't automatically open it up for public hunting. The landowner has to certify everybody that hunts on that parcel. So the city has certified three of its parcels over the past several years. Some of these have been taken off at the beginning of the year because of concerns and then kind of reintroduced and approved later on in the year. This was the one from last year in 2022. This is the industrial park property. There were some concerns by the adjoining property owners, which would be along Anderson Road here, along the bottom. After expressing those concerns and us talking with DNR conservation officers, decided to look at creating a hunt area and a safety zone area, that safety zone, and setting everything back from those residential parcels. So that's DMA public lands, number one.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can you clarify that? I don't know what that means. What does the safety zone do?
So no hunting within that area. So they can't even set up any stands within that area. They have to, within the hunt area, everything has to be interior. So they can't, even if they are, let's say, set up on this corner here, they can't hunt out this direction. It has to be interior.
Thank you.
So those little out, out thingies, the little lights?
Yep.
Those are just to contribute to the, to the square footage? They're not like, I mean, because there's no way that you could hunt in there and be protected.
Correct. Yep. So these are simply the access areas. This is a platted street on both ends coming, actually all three, coming into that parcel. Same thing with DMA public plans, number two. This is behind the, boy, that picture's really bad. Boat storage facility here, launch ramp, so wetland area between that section and Old Channel Trail. Same idea here, as we established hunting zones. So even though the red is the entire acre area, the hunt zones are a small portion of that. So not only pulls them away from residential up on the hill, but also away from bike trail interaction down below. Previously, if we go to this property, so this is the bike trail coming up towards Old Channel Trail. Same idea, this entire parcel was available for hunting. So because of safety concerns, we now pushed it up the hill on Old Channel Trail. So it's just this small zone along here. So there's no other access. In fact, if you walk on the bike trail, you cannot even see this kind of hunting zone from that location. So those are the three public lands, and we do have one DMA private lands, the Weese's property. This one has been certified the past three years, so nothing new. This is near Walsh Road. So Walsh Road, where it takes off from Business 31 and heads north into the township, Weese's parcel is right here. So it would be requesting certification of that parcel as well. So the certification for 2023 would be for the three private or public lands, DMA deer management areas, and the one private lands deer management area.
Jeff, if you look on the bottom red line there?
Yes.
At the left-hand side of it, what looks, I can't tell if that's hoses, isolated on there and down in the bottom.
In this location, yes. Yep, so this is almost straight across from Wesco.
Okay.
And this is, right just north there is actually the old trailhead building that the city has and has a trail currently. So if you drive along this road further south, then there's two houses there.
My picture, I'm seeing what looks like a house about 30 feet down the road.
Yeah, it's probably close to that. Most of the hunt area is actually to the north here. If you look at your, very often your packet is probably a little bit clear. But you can see kind of the conifer vegetation up in this section because that's the only upland area. Everything down below is largely flooded. So I don't even know that there's a hunting area in the south closest to those residents.
So from a safety perspective, there's no question about it being that close?
Yes, yeah. We've had both, I was, both chiefs, so previous chief and the new chief have know the parcel and so no safety concerns.
Okay.
Any other questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the DMA areas.
Second?
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhoff?
Yes.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Mayor Woman?
Yes.
Can I do a follow-up question? What's our goal?
What's our goal? Well, that's, that's a good question. So this last year is the first year that we actually started looking at population survey data. And that was, I think included in your packet there as well. Prior to that, it was voluntary only. So they could or could not report that. So this was a requirement for moving forward. There's a survey card. I gave you kind of the four-block, but it's actually a little pocket guide that they take out of the field with them, that they record. And they have to turn this in in order to get certification for the following year. So we had 100% respond last year. And I think that was the population numbers that were included in here for this. So what this data will do, it actually, looking at kind of old studies, both within Michigan as well as the Midwest, is this will give us an idea of buck-to-doe ratio so that you can look to see if there's a healthy population. And meaning that it's not so that you can get larger bucks, it's that you have a healthy population distribution proportion. It takes about three years to get that information. So we have some previous voluntary information, but it's maybe 20% of the participants. So not that we have 100% participation. We can get real data for actual populations.
So what's the goal?
So then the goal will be, whatever that ratio, it's usually like a one to four. So one doe or one buck for every four does. If you have doe populations greater than that and you start to see habitat impacts, deer browse, et cetera. So we are close to that. We're still a little bit above that. So we can take a look at this next year to see if we're at that 25% ratio.
And at that point, would you close the season here?
Yes, or close it for given parcels. So there'd be parcels that will still be high. I would imagine that industrial park property, because that is a funnel for a lot of deer coming from the township, will always be high. The other parcels I could see decreasing, yes, are taking off the list. Yep.
7D, Jeff?
7D. So the second portion of this is the hunting permit applications. So this is kind of a multi-step process. They submit an original application, which then city staff and city hall do an initial review of to make sure that there's no outstanding issues that they have with the city in general. We then send it down to the chief police for him to do a review and background check of all the applicants. He does not sign off on these until he approves that. And so then they come to council for final review. As part of this process, because it's per individual, is that approvals need to be by the individual. So that's why I always have the list of names. So even if you say approve all the applications, you still need to say all the names for approval. All those applications were included within your packet. There are several of the hunters in the Bowcamp family there that are youth hunters. So if they go out, they have to go out with a parent. The parent cannot hunt during that period, but has to sit with them. They, both parties also have to have a valid DNR license to be out there as part of our hunt.
All of these are repeats, correct?
All, two new here, Tony Jaeger and Chris Jaeger are new. All the Bowcamps are repeats. Paul Hill is a repeat and Alan Weese's is a repeat. The Jaegers are related to the Bowcamps. I think it was Tony's, the dad is the brother of, yep, this is Bowcamp. Several female names listed.
I take it from the chief's approval that there were any complaints about any of the people that were repeats?
Correct, yep. Yeah, we have only ever had an issue with one hunter. He has not been, he has not applied since.
Other questions or a motion?
I'll go ahead. I move that we approve the applications for Amber Bowcamp, Adam Bowcamp, Claire Bowcamp, Reagan Bowcamp, Brian Bowcamp. Getting into the tongue twister. Tony Jaeger, Chris Jaeger, Paul Hill, and Alan Weese's. Support.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhoff?
Yes.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Mayor Woman?
Yes.
Number 7E, Jeff?
7E, MML Annual Meeting, City Representatives, including your packet, you already noticed from MML, regarding assigning representatives to that meeting. Has to be an elected individual. So even if I was attending, I could not be that representative. Makes sense that if there are council members who are planning to attend, that they would be the representatives. If nobody is attending, we do not have to send a representative. But this is your opportunity. I've not heard from anyone whether they plan to attend or not. If you do, let us know. We can get you registered. And then you can be the representative. You need to do a selection prior to September 18th. So even if you think you might be going, you can be designated as representative. And then if you don't, that's okay.
So there was more blue information than the motion?
Yes. Well, there, there still needs to be a motion. So I don't know, is anybody planning to?
I'm thinking about calling.
Anybody else? So if we could, we just have a motion for Lisa to be the representative.
I move that Lisa be our representative if it works out.
Second.
Probably need roll call just for the record.
Councilman Newhoff?
Yes.
Councilman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilman Hires?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Woman?
Yes.
Number eight is public comment. This is open public comment. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. Let me know if you're going to speak. And please use the microphone and give your name and address.
Hi, excuse me. I'm Bill Tarr, 5011 Dowling, Montague. Recently, there was some public tree removal contracted by the city in my neighborhood. First, I want to point out that the Tree Service is now doing a much better job of utilizing personal protection equipment. That was a comment I made in the past, and it's nice to see that they have improved. The other thing I want to talk about is that I believe there's room for improvement in terms of notifications when removal or significant treatment. Although homeowners that are directly adjacent to the public trees that are being removed may be notified, I think it'd be important that other neighbors also be notified if significant trees are being taken down. And my, my point here is with a planned removal, quite often it impacts the neighbors in a lot of different ways. Some of us have an attachment to the nearby trees, especially the mature majestic ones. Allowing us to prepare emotionally for those trees to go down or to prepare for the change in sightlines for all of those things that are going on would be important. Now, from a physical perspective, some neighbors may need time to prepare for the loss of shade, for the loss of windbreak, and for the loss of the, how do I want to put it? I guess it would be the loss of masking from sightlines that they don't want. For example, streetlights, unsightly dumpsters, those kinds of things. You lose a tree and that stuff pops right on the front. So by, by having notification to the neighborhood, that gives everyone a chance to prepare if they need to do some preparation. The case in point for me, there was a significant tree that did need to be removed, that was removed on Cook Street near Dowling. From just our apparent look, there are houses that now have lost some shade. And for our, for us, we lost a great view of a beautiful tree that was providing a lot of wonderful green space. That is now blue. It's not a bad blue, but it was still prettier. It's green as far as we're concerned. And another item that came up is sometimes the removal of a healthy tree is not always the only choice. That specifically across the street from us, we watched a healthy 100-plus-year-old tree get cut down about two years ago to put in a sidewalk and a pad for, for a bus. The bus no longer comes through. And I have to believe that they could have made an arrangement with the homeowner to route around the tree and save this large tree. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Kristy Bortle. Yeah, what am I, 8691 Sheridan Street? I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't know what, what the comments were made about the fireworks. But I don't think we got our monies or, and I don't know if that's what other people thought or not, but they weren't that great, in my opinion. So, and then you guys have heard me say it before, but when we do a new street, I'd like to see a white path, put it on the shoulder of the new streets that we do. And there's one more thing. I don't remember. I'm old. So those are just my opinions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Bill Grant on Cook Street, 8493. I just wanted to bring up another thing that bothered me, and that's the worms we've got on the oaks. I know everybody says they can't afford to spray paint, spray the bugs or whatever. I see oaks all over the place that are losing their limbs. I got a woods right next to me that I own, and I got big leaves coming, limbs coming down. They get all laid up and then they get rotten and drop. And this is, what, the third or the fourth year we've had a tree. And the first year was terrible for me. I mean, my driveway was full of mud. And I thought it was going to be over. Well, it wasn't as bad this year. But I sprayed myself for 15 feet down all the way around all my woods. And we tried to get rid of all the little nests and all that stuff. My question, I guess, is that how many people are affected that way? I know down on Cook Street, I see trees that are empty from the leaves all dropping. And I think somebody said the reason we weren't spraying were because of some butterfly or something. Anyway, whatever the reason, we call environmentalists, we, we talk about saving this and saving that. I mean, they collect the trees. And trees is something that's very important to us as far as oxygen and everything. So I thought I'd raise the question. It's not up to me to make that decision, but I'd like to see them sprayed. Green Raptors does. Or bigger.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Lisa Reed, 8679 Sheridan Street. And I, I took a look at the budget that's put out and the city manager puts out. And I got to tell you, to see where our taxes go, I could not decipher that budget. It would be really nice to be able to see clearly where the money goes that we're paying. A few meetings ago that I was able to attend, there was a woman who stood up, and she was a real estate agent and lived in Montague. And she was giving a warning about all the Airbnbs that are coming in. Do you remember that? And she just said, she was just giving a suggestion to maybe have a lottery system. I just wondered, has anything been done with that? I'm concerned that, her point was that people aren't not going to be able to, families aren't going to be able to live in Montague anymore and afford the taxes. And the plan that's coming, you know, I, I agree with you. Montague is a nice, small town. I feel like this new five-year plan is going to just cram a bunch of buildings and that I don't know what it's going to look like. And is it going to take away Montague, you know, its quaintness? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Cheryl Lohman, 8725 Mead. July 28th was Cruisin' in our community, Whitehall and Montague together. And it is a wonderful family event. Children of all ages, toddlers, babies, up through young adults. And I was surprised to see how many of the elderly people were standing on the curb, "Burnout, burnout, burnout." And that really just made me because as a teacher, when I was teaching school, the rules were in the public schools for the safety of all the students. I remember one little boy in fifth grade had a dog, and he had to open his dog food that morning, and he put the penknife in his pocket. Well, school came and he got caught that he had a knife. We, as teachers, went to the school board on his behalf, but the rule was the rule and they had to enforce it. He was suspended for three months or so. Anyway, I Googled the Chamber website, and this was posted on Chamber's website as well as the staging site in White, in Whitehall. And it says, quote unquote, "A few rules for Cruisin'. No candy or toys may be thrown from the cars." Tom and I went and we sat this year on the causeway. It's the first time I have been to Cruisin', but he usually has been there with the ham radio club and at a different location. This year, we sat on the causeway. And I was dismayed to see the number of cars who have crossed the yellow line, weaving back and forth, squealing the tires, throwing clouds of smoke into the air, which certainly would be a pollutant to the environment. And then there was the one vehicle that threw candy in, disregarded the rules. But the rule said also so, said no burnouts. Burnouts are not permitted. Not permitted, which means if I choose as a public citizen to break a speed law, I have every right to be arrested, or not arrested, ticketed, correct?
Yes.
And so why are these people who have chosen blatantly to disregard the rules that they have assigned apparently to go in? they have assigned apparently to go and follow? And the last rule said, "Keep calm and follow the rules." There was one truck rider with a female on top. When he spun out, she lost her balance and had she not had someone next to her, she would probably have been right over the edge of the truck. Why are they not ticketed for reckless driving? Is it the crowd mentality that's urging them on, "Burnout, burnout, we need to see this. This is why we are there. We want to see the fun." No, safety of all. And I talked with some of my friends in Spring Lake, Grand Haven area this morning. Coast Guard Festival doesn't even have a parade. They just park the cars and let the people walk and visit. And I urge the city of Montague to look ahead to next year and see if we can do away with that risk to all the citizens, especially the children, especially the children. Thank you.
Anybody else? Moving on to number nine, city manager update.
Okay, a few updates for you this evening. I did throw a couple of slides up here. One, Buttermelt Creek project, so DDA had, they're working on their budget, approved a grant to continue with the walking trail around Buttermelt Creek. So this was funding through an ADA accessibility grant. So the walking path previously started kind of at the little parking area, went in front of the sledding hill and then stopped. So that grant work is covering the cost to basically do the loop around the wetland area, include a little spur, so not the full trail that way, a little spur towards the creek and then reconnect with the walking path here. Depending on the extent of the funds, it was a $20,000 grant. That trail might also extend to get it closer to that crossing near the skating rink. So that work is currently undergoing, has to meet ADA standards. So pulling soil out, must be appropriate width, appropriate grade, hard compacted soil, so it's wheelchair accessible. So that's currently happening. Couple of things I wanted to mention just because they will be unsightly for a little while are the two landscape projects, which the council approved. The big one in front of City Hall here, all the way from, did I grab the right photo here? Here's City Hall up here. It's all the way from in front of the library around by the police department to the alley entryway. So all that grass is coming out. Montague Tree Farms is executing that contract. So there are going to be some perennials in there and some myrtle as well. And then a short little path up along the edge of Old Channel Trail here as you go up towards Church Street. That was per request of Public Works because of all the light poles, telephons, everything in there, takes a lot of handwork to mow that zone. So that's starting as well. Auditors started last week, their field work, they completed that. So they'll be working with city staff for the next couple of months and then do a presentation to the council in December at that first meeting in December. I think it's December 4th, 4th or 5th. So that will be a work session there. Update on Whitehall products, you have probably seen, majority of the building is now gone across the street. So everything up to the pottery has been demoed. There's still some work to do to finalize that. Hope is to get the puddings in yet this year and then start with the substructure from there. Also waiting to get the state permit. Ended up that the city did the application for the state permit for possible wetlands impact. So that's what this little photo is here. This is kind of the corner of their parking lot for some additional parking, which is up in this zone, up in here. And then as you move down towards the city parking, there's a little bit of wetland impact. So city applied for that permit because in doing that, any restoration work has to occur on city property. So that would be an excavation area there and wetland restoration. So that is ongoing, we're waiting for that as well. Last item, a couple of meetings ago, councilman hires us for a solar project update. So I wanted to give you an update of where we are. So currently we have four projects that have been completed. There are still several in the works for this coming fiscal year. So the launch ramp, fish cleaning station, Maven Beach Farmers Market and Shermer Tower have all been completed and some of them in operation for two years. So total electric savings, so actual true electric use savings, non-production on the consumer's bill. So everybody that gets the consumer's bill, you look down below. So it's not just what you use, you have the PSCR rates, all these other different components. So if you include those. Other refunds and rebates the city has received, meter consolidation and abandonment and then also rate study changes that we've completed. So current savings to date, $18,613 for this current year. So calendar year, just over $2,400 for current. And then in the previous report, which I think I gave in December, November, December, something like that, $16,194. So you can see getting some incremental savings. Just as a quick reference, what does this mean? So the launch ramp project itself costs between $11,000 and $12,000. So simple savings in electric use so far has basically paid for that. Solar projects and also additional savings. So it's definitely benefiting the citizens of Montague and doing those projects. This, I just grabbed those four sites real quick to give you an idea of kind of how that energy production, obviously peaking in the summer, but there's still production during the shoulder seasons, fall and spring and also winter. The reason this graph looks so different, there's two different inverters that the city uses. So an M-phase inverter is the main one and another inverter for this one. So it just produces the data differently. So we can log in and look at those real-time usage at end of time. So some, I think that is all I had this evening. Last, council has some questions.
I have one question. Where are we with Ferry Street project? The guy came and gave the presentation and had that drawing and he wanted to start it in the fall, but we haven't heard a word from him since to see an updated drawing because some of us had concerns about it looked to, it didn't match the downtown area.
Yep, so he submitted an updated, kind of an updated concept to look at that facade more. They're trying to finalize that within the next couple of weeks. I imagine we will see him or somebody in September here. By November, I think it's November 14th, he has to submit that financial letter of commitment to begin construction. So by November, we'll see some revision.
Well, I hope he changed it to something that matches better than what he had. That was not good.
I think it's stated in our master plan that it has to match the facade of downtown.
Yeah, and I was reading in the master plan too and there was, I was gonna remember the page number and it, there were some things in there that I don't think it matched too. So I think we gotta make sure.
Remind me what you're talking about, the Ferry Street project. I don't remember the facade.
That's the guy that's gonna build, I don't know, maybe you weren't here.
Big building.
Big like industrial spaceship.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, when I read the master plan too, I thought, well, I don't think that building fit this. I was gonna remember what page it was on too, but I don't.
Other questions? I'm sorry.
So I, I'd like to see, invite to see that the city is starting to take initiative on, bringing in more natives, shrubs and such out here in the Old Channel Trail. And I just wonder if we could do that in more spaces. I mean, if the goal is to reduce mowing, like around guardrails or, I mean, we could put wildflowers and native shrubs and head of things like that out anywhere.
Yep, so even the Maple Beach, Maple Road project, so the extent of after they do the dredging and do the improvements there is to kind of move that mower area interior a little bit. So as it kind of makes sense in different locations and we'll integrate those, especially as we're doing upgrades on sites anyway.
Okay. Could you go back to the Buttermelt Creek?
Yeah.
Some old meeting stuff. And I noticed that we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on like prying a new pop or the equivalent, like people to design it. And it just seems like that's not a very good use of our money. And I just wonder if there's any options to, you know, it'd be better to just put the money into developing a park, if that's, if there's anything, if there's any options to be able to do that and not spend so much on them. I know, I think council asks you to do that, but it strikes me that that's kind of a waste of money.
Right, it depends on the extent of the improvements. So even going for grants as long as you have a conceptual plan in place. So like this plan was actually put together by staff. Already, yep, so our staff, so it could be submitted to Natural Resource Trust Fund for those grant applications. The only thing you need in engineering stamp is actually for a permit. Anything else is money spent for the engineer and not for the project, so.
So what would be the difference in cost if we had like staff do more of that and less of paying those guys?
Eighty percent savings on those engineering costs?
Any other questions for Jeb?
All of the solar that we're doing around town, I'm wondering if, I keep talking to people who are really interested in solar. And I'm wondering if there would be any opportunity for this city to not necessarily coordinate solar here for homeowners, but if there, if we went to the solar companies that you're working with and found out whether there are any group rates essentially, if we get 10 or 15 or 20 or whatever households interested in it, if there's any kind of a price break or any way that we could help homeowners who want to do that.
There, there is.
Can I speak to that? Because we just did that last spring and I'm having solar installed in my house on Thursday and you get 30% back under taxes right now. You get a 30% rebate back if you have solar installed because of the tax incentives. There's, there's a huge incentive to do it.
So there's tax incentives, what I'm wondering about is discounts from the installers.
There weren't enough people that got bought.
So there was, this spring, there was a group I was on called Solar Up and I was actually part of that presentation talking about program. If you get so many people to sign up, then they will bundle those as a group discount. I think part of the issue was that sometimes it takes so long to get those groups that the bundled discounts disappear because they're hitting that sign.
Well, it's taking a while.
It's a possibility.
So is it too late to get a group still?
I could ask, I could ask them.
And how, can I ask something? How is that spread out in, or how's that information given out to the community? Because this is the first I've ever heard of.
There were, I think there was something in Beacon, there's some articles on, not articles, but posts on Facebook. Solar Up program did some posts. That could be something we do it again and get the information out there.
Maybe in the messenger or, yeah, something through the city.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to, Buttermelt Creek minute to go along with what Lisa was saying. Is, are improvements there and what we're doing, what we want to do, what we're spending money on and so on, are we running that through our Parks and Recreation Subcommittee? Are they involved in making decisions there?
So this, this was one of the original concepts that Parks and Natural Area Subcommittee looked at for approval to kind of move forward as the funds became available. DDA, because this is kind of their downtown park, has been then weighing in to make those, you know, improvements. Usually grants are $10,000 to $25,000. So as we get those funds, if they can meet that concept, then yes.
If, if we are applying for grants and getting grants for Buttermelt Creek Park, is it impeding our ability to get grants for Medbury Park or for Baden Beach or for other areas of the city?
No, because the grants are based on different project components, so, and also the different grant funders. So this grant was specifically for ADA access, trail access, that sort of thing. So it fit well with here. There are other ones like Natural Resource Trust Fund that are bigger projects, boardwalks, public access, long waterways. Fisheries Trust are then fisheries oriented, fisheries overlooks, things like that. So depends on the grant source. The, and our passport is more for, right now they're focusing on structural activities, bathrooms, that sort of thing, so playgrounds, et cetera.
At last, everything that we're doing there is on our property, it's not affecting private property owners at all.
Correct, yep.
Could you give an update on the boardwalk?
On the boardwalk? We're waiting for permits to be submitted for that kind of replacement. I actually have a call into the engineer right now to see where we are in that process.
Any other questions for Jeb? Now moving on to number 10, messages and communication from myself, the council members? Hold on. No. Susan?
Yes, thank you.
Lisa? That is easy. I have several things I just want to mention, no big things, but thanks for all the comments tonight. I noticed Jeff was taking lots of notes. And in addition to your comments, you might want to put it in writing, just give it to the city staff so they have something that they can use. Good discussion that we've had and things. We may not always agree on things, but we want to thank you for all of your comments. At this time, we'll take a motion to adjourn and then we'll have a short three-minute break before we go into the work session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and we have three minutes. We call the work session to order. I think we have one, one thing on the session. There were too many, Jeb.
Right. So city has received a request from Sports Person's Ministries International. I include that letter in your packet this evening. They are asking for a reduction or even a waiver of the city boat launch fees for a tournament they are having. They talk about the other tournaments that they have, number of boats that they have, time of year, et cetera. I also include with your packet the boat launch ramp permits policy that the city established. And we'll just note one thing related to permit fees, that the city shall not waive or reduce fees for any individual entity or organization regardless of intent or purpose of using the ramp. I'll also note that the city has received requests from other organizations for something similar, even for other student programs to either use the van shell or the boat launch to reduce or waive those fees. And the city has never granted that request. Because it is counter to policy, even if city staff wanted to approve it, we are able to. So that's why it is before you this evening. It does not need to be a formal decision. If the council decides we don't want to review this or take action, then I will simply notify the tournament that city stands on the policy as it exists.
So what would their fees be? What would be involved for them?
They did not say what they would be willing to pay. They did give one example there that Muskegon only charges $5 per boat to launch. So our current fee is $40 for non-residents, 30 for resident, 25 for senior resident.
And we've done away with the daily pass?
Correct, yep. Part of the reason in eliminating the daily was because that was one of the areas that we found that most people were trying to cheat the system, using the envelopes to say that they put money in the tube, using the tear off queen in their dash and there was lots of confusion on all parts. And we found that most of the people even that were getting dailies were already fishing two or three days and so they were basically at a seasonal fast rate anyways. So the only dailies were largely for tournaments.
Well, I, why, I think the organization, everything is great, you know, and personally you'd love to do it, but we have a policy which you have it underlined right here and we've turned down people in the past. And if you open it up to one, you're opening a can of worms for the city and putting the city, I think, in a really bad position. So I personally think we should stand by the policy.
I agree, I think we should, we shouldn't pick and choose. And we have a lot of boat traffic on our lake as it is. We all need to solicit more boat traffic.
We also have this three, four, five places where they can launch into the lake for free. And I agree with the others here, I think we're gonna open up here that we're gonna have every nonprofit asking us to do something. This is a good group, I did some reading on it, they're a great group, they have great things for kids, but I don't know, I don't think we should open up.
I agree.
Is there any sense in looking at, not just for this organization, but looking at daily passes for tournaments only, since they're usually only like on a Saturday or a Sunday going forward?
I think the cost, isn't it? I mean.
You mean the cost? The cost of doing a change?
I don't know how it's working with our new system, but I had a couple of conversations with. with Chief Row before he left about the time, the hours that were put in counting money and reconciling things and doing things with people who said they paid and there was no proof. It just, it was cost to the city a lot more.
So there was a reason why we got rid of it, basically?
I think I'm hearing consensus to go by the rules.
Hold the policy.
Anything else you need on that, Jeff?
Nothing there.
Do you need any ideas how to comment back to that?
No.
Okay. All right. Number three on the work session is again a public comment. This is open public comment. Again, no action will be taken, but we'll, please limit your comments to three minutes and again, use the microphone.
Kristi Ortell, eighty-six ninety-one, chairman. I remembered where I lived. And I remembered what I wanted to talk about was, you know, the Historical Society had a meeting at Lipka's Drugstore and it was really informational and so on. And she, her, she informed us that her nephew has been coming up and remodeling and so on upstairs and he's enthusiastic about getting some of the smaller spaces back into small businesses, like maybe the ones that are on the alley, they own that whole building and maybe the ones underneath, that go down under the store. And so that, to me, is, that's, forgot his name, Dean Weaver, is competing with somebody like Patty because part of his plan was small business, small spaces. And so, you know, I'd rather see it happening in one of our old buildings than in a building that doesn't fit, that doesn't look like something that fits in Montague. So I'd like to see, you know, maybe some more support for what Patty's doing than support for something that doesn't look right. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Anybody else?
Can we make a comment? I just want to. Okay. No other public comments?
No other public comments?
I do, I have something I was going to ask.
Go ahead.
Do I have to say my address again?
Go ahead.
Lisa Reed, eight-six-seven, I, Sheridan Street. I have under the, I don't follow what's going on, but I guess there's three new, or they're supposed, we're supposed to vote, but there was nobody who stepped up to run against council? Is there a vote coming up and can someone be a write-in? Is it too late to have, I mean, was there supposed to be something with this or is it just filled already because nobody's running against?
There are three people running in three seats.
Oh, there are three.
But that happens July twenty-fifth to get in your petition, get your signatures.
And it's too, it's too late. And so there's three, there are people running for the, okay, I didn't know that. I don't know, is this in the newspaper? Yes. Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. Anybody else? Right, I think.
I just wanted to add a thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, and I should have said it at the end of the last meeting. Having spent years on the other side of this seat in the audience where you are, I got to say it takes a lot of guts to stand up to the microphone and talk. And so thank you for doing it. Please know that we listen and thank you for caring enough to come here and to let us know how you feel about something. It's important.
I wonder why this wasn't a packet order and this?
So Jeff, do you, you had some other stuff in the packet. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Yeah, a couple other items, this latest in your packet. Montague Township submitted just for general information. They have to for all the surrounding municipalities, their ORB ordinance. So that is why it was included, because they have to notify us. So that was informational in purpose. And then the other was the map of the truck route. I was able to get ahold of the major carrier, what would be their term, logistics company. So they designate truck routes throughout the United States, so we're able to actually log in our truck route. So it is now official, even though it was sort of official before, but if you looked on the actual official site, it only included the exit locations at Poole Vale and at Colby. It didn't actually include the route. So now the route will be included. So anybody that plugs it in as part of a trucking company gets this route. The guy that was doing the programming, he did give a word of warning that this does not mean that they still will not grab their phone and go to their closest location and figure out their route. But if they're using the logistics company map and truck routes, they will get this as their official route. So that will help some.
So back to this to clarify, this doesn't require any action on our part, it's just to let us know they're doing this?
Yep.
They, they are proposing to pass an ordinance to allow the golf carts and I hope we take a close look at this at some point. We're already getting a lot of golf cart traffic on the city streets. We have one area in the city where I know we have at least four golf carts, four different families that have golf carts going at different times, kids driving the golf carts on the streets and so on. And I'm not saying that I'm necessarily against that, but I think we need to look at that closely and we need to look at this closely. I have problems with the traffic on Woodbeck Road by the Township Park and so on. I've expressed some other concerns to you about that, but it's kind of beyond our control. I hope we look at this real close before we do anything in the long term.
Can you remind me what our ORB policy is? Are they allowed on the roads? They're on Old Channel Trail all the time.
ORBs are only allowed on the road if they meet the vehicle criteria, so it has to have mirrors, blinkers, brake lights, et cetera.
License plate?
License plate, yep. Yeah, yeah, and a license.
So if they're slated, they're, they're legal?
If they're licensed vehicle, that can be on the road, then yes.
Golf carts are not.
No, I'm, there are four of these that are allowed.
Okay. Number, number four on the work session is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. A motion in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.